Next item, please.
So next, I still have the Care to the Core event. That was a great event on the 28th of April. And we have Dr. Swedan and some students here to provide a presentation. We have Miriam, Kareem, and thank them for their, a couple of them with their leadership on the council as well. And in the district. It was a great day.
So we have one from, man is from Fortson, Kareem is from Dearborn High, and Miriam is from Edsall. I'm gonna let them take over because they really did everything. This was a little different this year. We had more student input. And I think it was really towards the end of when we started looking at SEL back a year ago. With Mike DeSally and Dr. Maliko, we wanted to have more students involved in student voice. And at those meetings, we had student voice. So I'm gonna let you guys take it over.
We're gonna play the video first.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So we're gonna play a video first to kind of highlight the day. And then we'll let the students kind of break down everything that happened during the day.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Dr. Swedan.
Caring is one of the core values of Dearborn Public Schools. Whenever someone is not feeling okay, you can always help them just by smiling at them.
Is when someone needs help, you jump up and go help them.
Caring is trying to see things from a different perspective.
What is caring? Caring is about respecting, letting people be themselves for who they are.
What is caring? Caring is showing respect to others.
Caring is to be helpful to others in all kinds of ways.
Caring is when you smile at someone and light up their day.
Being nice to one another and hoping don't give back up and never hope don't give up.
Caring means to me is when somebody is listening to you.
Caring means to me is when you're being upstate.
Good evening. As Dr. Swedan already mentioned, my name is Miriam Masagir and I'm a student at Edsall Ford High School and I attend DCMSD.
My name is Kareem Kadu. I'm a senior at Dearborn High School.
My name is Iman Sukri and I'm a senior at Fortson High School.
So Care the Core Day is in, something that was started in 2018. It's a day of student-driven initiatives that are focused on identifying and stop being bullying. With the overall goal of improving the culture within our schools. So Care the Core Day encourages students to have open-ended conversations discussing the importance of compassion, creating a safer environment, and like I said, that anti-bullying awareness. Miriam and I had the honor of attending all of the Care to the Core Day, or some of the Care to the Core Day initiatives with Dr. Maliko and some of the cabinet members. We went to Gear Park where there was an assembly on core values, a painting project at Stout Middle School, and then compassion cards and a letter to a friend at Woodworth.
Moreover, we also attended Dearborn High School where they had a health fair. We also went to Fortson High School where they had classroom restorative circles, including students from all kinds of classrooms, including AP students, students in normal classrooms, English learners, and students with special needs. Along with Edsall Ford High School where they were having core value discussions. And here are just a few pictures. Some of them were used from the video as well. But these were just showcasing some of the schools that we attended during that day. As we spoke at the superintendent, student advisory council meeting today, we asked students what their reflection was about Care to the Core Day as some of our SSAC members were involved at the Stout and Woodworth programs during that day. And this was some of the feedback that we got. First off, a lot of the students felt a sense of community and unity among students that they spoke to as our high schoolers went and visited middle school and elementary school students. They had many meaningful discussions, along with they had a lot of engagement with various age groups as the high schoolers went and visited middle schoolers that were also going to attend their high schools as well. They created a connection between students and a lot of the middle school students talked about how they could see the high schoolers as role models and how they can look up to them and learn from them. And they built better communication skills. And less than at least, it implemented a social emotional learning into the classroom setting, which is usually, you know, not used in the classroom.
Here to talk about the importance of having student-to-student interactions. This is not to say that teacher-to-student interactions are not important. We believe that having teacher-to-student interactions are very important as the child grows and as the child is part of the Dearborn Public School community. This is just to say that having interactions between high school students, middle school students, and elementary school students is very important because they are a form of empowering. And usually, students see no empowerment as lack of motivation. And lack of motivation may lead to sometimes performing poorly at classrooms. So we think that's very important. Secondly, us students, we share a different perspective that may not necessarily be shared with or observed by administrators. So we think, like last time when we went to Woodworth, we talked with Woodworth students and we talked about the high school experience and what to prepare and what to look forward to. So that was very important and we communicated with each other. Thirdly, we talked about authenticity. And although they refer to us by Mrs. and Mr., we still had that link with each other. We were linked. We talked about our experiences. We had similar experiences and we just, we kind of connected with each other. So we thought that that was important to have student interactions. And yeah, that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Watts, excuse me.
I was sad that I wasn't able to make it this year. I was sick, so I stayed away from every one. But I noticed that during one of your slides, that some of the feedback that you received was the students said that they felt connected to one another. And I think this is maybe a question for Dr. Maliko. Do we have any other initiatives or events where students are able to have sort of that, that we can replicate what this event does? Because I'm assuming we do this in May because it's Mental Health Awareness Month, correct? Or I guess how did this event come to be?
This is an annual event that we do for sticking up to our core values. So that's why.
Right, but I guess why do we pick May?
It has to do with bullying prevention and other topics that are positive, which is how it started, yes.
Is there any way that I'm just thinking like, how could we replicate this? So that's not towards the end of the year? Because I think there's value in being able to connect to your students, to your student body, towards the beginning of the year versus waiting to the end of the year to say, I've connected with my fellow students. Just something to think about.
So we agree with you 100% and the students wanted to do more mentorship.
Dr. Swedan, you want to get some more?
At the SSAC meeting today, that was, that took up a big part of the agenda where students wanted to start some mentoring and tutoring. And it could be cross-age tutoring and mentoring. So that's something that they want to take on and will support them. Because I think coming from them is the best way to do it.
Of course, yes.
And some of the middle schools that they went to have said, yes, you know, we would love some kind of program where students from the high school can come in and be with our students, maybe during advisory or something. But we were, we're in talks about that.
Great.
Yeah, I can also briefly touch on this. We'll touch on it at the next meeting when we do our full SSAC year-end review to the board. There were visits, this just kind of touches on what Dr. Swedan was saying, from different middle schools to the high schools. And those were the SETSEC members of those respective middle schools that came over to the high schools. And the SSAC members from each high school broke off into smaller groups, gave a tour. And then we had conversations about leadership, high school life, all of that. So that's something we're also working on expanding next year.
Trustee Mossen? Well, thank you to you for presenting. Great job. So you said you're not a senior, right?
No, I said I'm a junior at Edsall.
You're a junior at Edsall.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask the Fortson, Tractors and Pioneers, where are you going for college?
I am going to the University of Michigan Dearborn.
What are you majoring in?
Still undecided, but I might go for Middle Eastern Studies. Just because I came from overseas two years ago and I might want to just expand upon that.
Great. How about you, Kareem?
I'll also be attending the University of Michigan Dearborn, majoring in Business.
Good school.
Perfect. Amazing. Good job.
To our Edsall junior, are you planning on rejoining the Student Advisory Committee next year?
Of course, and I'll be an I.O. to do so.
Wonderful. Good to hear it. Your students are amazing and I thank you so much for what you do. And I do really like the idea of you mentoring and just kind of a big brother, big sister type program. Because you take younger students, they automatically look up to you. And with that connection, they can also, you might be able to help them in some of the personal issues that they face that they might not be willing to talk to an adult or administrator or even a teacher about. So I love that connection. So thank you very much for what you've done and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you.
Good job.
If I may add one more thing. Yes. My son obviously goes to Stout and he participated with Trustee Watts. He participated in an after-school activity where they actually did gardening. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, Omar has Asperger's and he perceives students differently. So he had a bullying event with one of the students and where they went for it. And Dr. Swedan actually facilitated that restorative circle for them. But she suggested if they can do the gardening project together. Guess what? Now he calls Mesh as a friend. So I commend you for that, Trustee Watts. I think we should do that more often. And I hope that we do the Care to the Core. Obviously, it should be everyday thing, similar to Mother's Day. Mother's Day should be every day. But Care to the Core, we should focus on establishing those relationships every day, not just one day of the year. And I do agree that we should perhaps have some similar event, Mr. Stonen, in the beginning of the year. And then another similar event at the end of the year. That would, that would make it.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
And in the beginning of the year, it'll start binding those students together.
Because there is a lot of misunderstandings that go. And especially when you have students who have, were so rich and diverse. And students unfortunately perceive others different. When you see the other person, you're gonna automatically, you know, think about the stereotypes and those things. And those conversations, and Dr. Swedan is definitely an expert on these. We just recently had the bullying forum at the Democratic Club. But she mentioned that, is that students need to talk more beyond the classroom. Beyond just, they're going there for eight hours, nine hours a day. So they need to find ways of dealing with each other. Whether it's respectfully, whether it's being friends or, you know. But at the same time, yeah, we should definitely minimize bullying and, and not shame it, but decrease it to a level where students are not bullied. Or we would have an open school that is outgoing, that is, a school that is welcoming to all students, where students feel safe. Thank you.
That's an ongoing process, for sure.
Absolutely.
One other thing, I just wanted to give a shout out since we're talking about student mentoring. Real quick to the web programs and what is the other one? We have the webs and?
We have the mentoring programs. I know the AOSB program was before COVID, but we also have the Link Crew program, yeah.
So we do have a lot of those type programs going on at the beginning of school years that are bringing in middle school students to their high school and they connect. So there's a lot of that, but I think it's so valuable. We ought to look into different ways of bringing that resource.
And I would just say that with that, there is, there is a lot of things going on during the year. Now, COVID did put a slowdown on some of it. But the Care to the Core event came from not having just this, you know, these auditorium sessions, but to actually promote it throughout the district, in the buildings, and to allow some creativity because, like you said, green schools are bullying prevention. Some schools want to take on, I was at the 100-year anniversary, I spoke at Duval. And I know they, I was principal there previously. And I did dress up as a Penguin during the Halloween dance. And I'm still trying to get Mr. Addy and possibly Principal Tim, if I mention that in my story. You know, being the Penguin school, but the green school and all the initiatives there, the gardening was so important. So part of it was to allow some creativity with each individual, but to highlight things. And so I think it is positive, but we can definitely look to expand some of those ideas. And with our SSAC, we will like to have them come, I think I mentioned to you, we usually have them come in June. And you see Kareem's leaving, he's been there for three years. Miriam, you know, brings that institutional knowledge. So that's why we allow 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And then we have the middle school. We don't allow enrollment for the 9th grade yet because we want them to get situated in the high school. And then if it's something they want to choose, they can apply. So that's part of the positive. So, thank you. And I just have a couple other positive announcements. Our lawyer, Mike Gibbons, who served as well for many years and had been with Tim Courier, who retired. Well, he was recognized in the Lawyer's Business Law. He sent us to the Board Weekly for great business law throughout the state of Michigan. So that's a real positive. I also want to mention Yana Garrasie received the Chamber Impact Person Award on Friday. And the only other thing I do want to mention before I turn it over is I did have a very positive meeting with what we started, a music committee, with teachers that have been here, with, we have some community. We have members of the orchestra, the Arab-American Orchestra and the youth. It was a very positive meeting as we looked to jointly promote the program, both with a combination of staffing and with working on exciting programs that can lead to more students in those programs. There's another meeting for this year. We had to just kind of have one meeting to get it discussed. They all wanted to meet again in June. And then we will look for plans into next year. So I think it's the beginning of a very positive program. I will be part of it for the, at least for the beginning start. And at times, the individuals will take over without me being there. So that was very positive. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Wonderful. Next item, please.
President, since this kind of segues in to the conversation we've been having, a couple of the items under the non-agenda items were follow-ups to things that had been brought up at previous board citizen participation commentary items. And I've noticed that over the years, as we changed and said that we wouldn't respond at the time of commentaries because we didn't want to misspeak or give out inaccurate information. We discussed before that we would like to have a follow-up. And sometimes we miss out on those follow-ups. Sometimes we get the information personally after there's been some comments made by citizens that we then discover maybe have holding inaccurate information or inconsistencies in what we're actually doing that we never bring back before the public at a follow-up meeting. So I would like to include for the future, on our agenda, a section of somewhere either before or after citizen participation and also a section for board follow-up on citizen participation. So that if we have anything to add to a previous board meeting where comments have been made that we wanted to clarify or add new information or correct misinformation, we are sure not to miss it. Tonight, we had a couple of items that we did clarify from that. And I would like to make that a regular part of our agenda moving forward.
Trustee Barrett?
Trustee Petrikos, I think that's a great idea. I want to go specifically to one of the non-agenda items, go back to the discussion of school safety. We are very thankful for all the parents that reached out to us and showed their concerns. We can always improve when it comes to student safety and employee safety. No doubt in my mind, it's the administration, the board, the whole community. That's number one issue is safety. So thank the parents that reached out to us, not just on social media, directly, phone calls, came to meetings. So that's a great idea moving forward. Thank you.
Agreed. Anyone else? Trustee Watts?
No, and I agree. And thank you for bringing that up. And I think, and I had spoken with Dr. Maliko earlier. And if we could, just under the other, if you could bring up the updates regarding the STEM middle school admission. Because we, and I don't know if that would be appropriate now or later, but that was something that we wanted to just bring up.
Are you ready for?
Sure, I'm gonna have Mr. Martin come up to speak to that. And I know the executive directors of achievement worked on that with Dr. Patterson.
Yeah, and I'll let, I'll let Ms. Farage kind of lead the, is the middle school, we'll be both can plug in here, so.
Thank you.
What do you?
She mentioned the criteria, so basically how we're piloting a new way to get enrollment. You knew that, I know it's been in board briefs.
Right, we discussed a research design that we're gonna be using for next year. What we're doing is we're taking 45 students. We typically take 60 students in 6th grade. For this year, we're taking 45 in place of the 60. And we're using 15 for a research design for next year. What we do is we take students who are averaging a score of one on the report card. So we do not solely depend on NWEA. We know that some students do not do well on benchmark assessment. So we're using a different criteria for those. So students scoring an average of one across math and reading in addition to principal and teacher recommendations will be eligible to apply for STEM. They will be notified by Dr. Patterson. This decision came about from instructional cabinet that includes principals, cabinet members, and executive cabinet members. We've been working on that. We pulled a list of those students. We met with STEM staff, STEM administration. And again, this is only temporarily for next year. And we have a lengthy discussion that's going on. We've been meeting on a monthly basis to update the STEAM criteria, not only STEM. Because STEM is the short way of STEAM includes more. It includes the arts, the technology, the math, the science. So we're including the vision for K-12. There is a committee for that and the principals have been involved heavily in this discussion so that we make sure every student in Dearborn Public School has access to STEAM education, not only the STEM students.
So just real quickly, the 45 students are the ones that qualified based on the NWEA score in math and reading that all the 5th graders have taken. The other 15 will be those students who have the average score of a one. I think we identified, and that's across three card markings. So there's 91 of those students. All those students that qualify will be informed. Those that have interest will be entered into lottery and will kind of go from there. For the one, for the 91 students who have the aggregate of ones, after their interests, after they initially express an interest, then that will come into the teacher and principal recommendation. So again, I will say, 60 students, part of that is, there isn't space for more. So anyways, that's for a later conversation.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank Trustee Petrikos for her suggestion. Because I think just this is an example of how it closes the loop. A citizen will bring a concern to us, we take it. And it's always discussed and deliberated. But the answer or what we've come up with as a solution isn't always given back to the community. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
And I just, so the individual we reach out to, so the individual gets a, you know, we've been doing that for several, for quite a while now. We're an executive director. But the public doesn't, doesn't know that the individual is getting a response or a communication.
Trustee Watts?
Just to clarify, is it an average of a one or 1.5 with math and reading?
So if you average, so it's ones and twos, but less than a 1.5. So what would average to a one, if that makes sense?
I just want to make sure so parents are hearing it. They know that it's.
A student doesn't have to have all ones. They can have a blend of ones and twos as long as it averages to a one when you're rounding up. So 1.499 and lower, I guess.
And then with the 45 students, is it solely their NWEA or is it also M-Step?
I know they're working on that.
For this year, it's NWEA. It used to be M-Step, but because M-Step was optional, we did not take M-Step into consideration for the last two years.
Okay.
The mark, the average of one is for the first three marking periods because the fourth one is not available by the time the deadline comes.
And what is the score on the NWEA? Can you remind me what that was?
I have it right here. One sec.
It's okay if you don't have it.
While we wait for that, can I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
So I asked a related question and Dr. Maliko was just whispering to him about this question to make sure that I didn't miss it on board briefs. Is, last time I asked how many students were accepted, but unfortunately said, you know, I'm changing my mind or I cannot provide transportation to STEM. Because that's, I know STEM does not have transportation. My sister went to STEM. My father gave her a ride, or I did sometime, actually, maybe once or twice. But my father took care of that and he's in East Dearborn, drove her all the way to Michael Berry every single day. And obviously, STEM parents know this. This is a commitment. However, what about the parents who their student gets accepted, but we don't have, obviously, transportation and we're not required to? And I know that answer. We don't require transportation period anyway except for special ed. But it's an added benefit as a Dearborn resident and a student who being in Dearborn Public Schools. We have transportation, but we can do just so much. We are already stretched with our busing. And to provide now another route for, to pick up STEM students, that's even an added cost. For students who, this program again is special. We do understand that. That's why we discuss it with parents. So how many students, I think I asked specifically, how many students in the past two years were offered STEM, but they were, they decided not to and/or they cited transportation as an issue?
We did ask the specific question of the administration. And they said they've been collecting this data about what happens. And my son was one of the students too and we carpool. What they do is they work on their end to make sure that, they work it out with parents who are neighbors to be able to carpool. But in the future, they will be more precise on collecting how many students are declining because of transportation. They did not have that number specifically, but they do work on providing carpooling by arranging with families.
With families, that is, because it is a murky situation.
It's a pool of choice.
Yes, yeah.
So there was an entry, I think it was me, Adam, you put it in. They estimated four to five students a year.
A year. Who would say I cannot?
But they don't have exact data because it was never kept in any database.
I think we should capture that from now on. But however, those four or five students, unfortunately, they're, and this is where I'm talking about equity, is we're offering this to parents who are able to drive their kids to school back and forth. And they can work on other ways when we, the school system can help them do that. But we have to think, I think, even deep, as we're providing, I know we're providing DCMSD students still. I used to ride that bus.
They're A-M-P-M.
So for middle school, it is an added cost to the district. Now, do we have to say, are we gonna add transportation for all STEM? But STEM, they come, I know for DCMSD, they go first to their home high school and they get picked up over there.
Yeah, or the other, they'll come to home high school and then go. So it's A-M-P-M.
Yeah, A-M-P-M, yeah. So I know if we want to look into STEM of providing transportation, that would be similar idea. They go to the middle school near them and/or nearby schools. We can decide, that's something for the future, I think, that we can look into.
It's not always a matter of just cost, though. There's logistics involved. Do you have enough spot drivers? Do you have enough people to service those routes? So there's a, it's a complicated issue. So.
To answer the question for reading and math, for reading, it's 222 and for math, 232 on NWEA.
math, 232 on NWEA.
Do those change every year depending on the range of the student scores or is it set?
Typically, we don't change it, but because of the percentile rank this year, many students dropped on NWEA because of the learning loss. We adjusted based on percentile ranks, which is a better or more accurate measure of student performance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, study, board study session, April 11th, 2022, Board Report 21 hyphen 109. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I have a uh motion moved by trustee Thorpe and I believe the support was by trustee Dambrosio?
It was both.
Okay. Are there any corrections? Any changes anyone noticed that need to be made? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Berry?
Yes.
Trustee Dambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes, President McDonald?
Yes. Next item?
Action items. Are there any, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or their superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Are we, are we doing citizen participation first or not? No.
No?
No, citizens.
But we're doing the action items.
That's what we're having now.
Yeah.
Yeah, action items.
Yeah, but we're not taking citizen participation on action items?
It's on.
It's on the agenda, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's just further down.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm just, I don't have that in front of me this time, so, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Trustee Thorpe?
I don't have the number in front of me. Do we have to pull the item for Wayne Risa? The budget item?
I think we do. Does it require?
Yeah, I believe we do.
I think that requires a roll call vote.
Which one? I'm sorry.
But we do a roll call vote for all of them, because that's your style.
Yes. But um, do we need to pull it separately or no? No? Okay.
Don't know. I just wanted to mention that one.
I, I would like to uh pull number 30. Obviously, that's supplemental.
Pull it for a roll call?
Yes. Can, can we pull citizen participation first or?
We're right in the middle of.
What, we haven't made a motion, right?
Yeah, the motion's been made.
Uh, who made the motion?
This is where citizen participation has always been.
And you got the, you got the agenda ahead of time. It's.
I did, I did. I'm just confused about the agenda. Well, anyway, I, I'd like to call for a closed session. I make a motion to close, for a closed session.
On what basis? We can't just call for a closed session?
Uh, for personnel reasons. And I need, I'm highly advised that we need to be in a closed session. And I hope that I can get a support for a closed session.
When?
Right now, to discuss personnel matters.
So, so there is a legal, if we're discussing a current employee, we have to give the employee the opportunity to make a decision if they want to be present or not. I have this confirmed from our attorney.
Yeah.
So we would have to adjourn it and have a closed session at another time until we can speak to whomever the person is that, um, if this is a personnel model discussion, um, whomever is being discussed, um, has that right to make a decision to either be there or not be present.
I, can I make myself clear? Um, uh, uh, number 30, we're discussing personnel and current staff members who are going to be recommended here to hold a position in our district. I would like to discuss this personnel matter in closed session for the benefit of this individual. I would like a second. If nobody's gonna support my motion, I mean, we're still, I'm just making a motion. If this motion, you're saying, is, is illegal.
It's a point of order. It's not illegal. It's just that the, so if there's a closed session, it's the person that gets to decide. I can't decide, you can't decide. It's the person that has to make a decision for open or closed and then they have to decide as to whether they want to be present for the closed uh session.
I know when we were talking, MASB, we have one employee, which is you, Dr. Maliko.
Yeah.
So I'd like to call a closed session to discuss my superintendent's performance.
I haven't been here in her two hour.
Excuse me, excuse me. You do not have the floor?
Yeah, you do not have.
I haven't been here in two hour, so I can't speak.
Not yet. I'm so sorry. But we do have a meeting in order.
Yes, you do not have the floor yet. We have a call for citizens' participation.
So the other thing I would just say was we do.
And, and I, I know per law, I, I.
And it's my decision.
It is your decision for us to, Dr. Maliko, I would like you to call upon us to call for a closed session to discuss your performance.
So my question would just be that we have my, my evaluation meeting coming up.
No, this is an urgent matter that is regarding.
You know, just to play it safe, I'll go ahead and support the motion, just to play it safe.
Okay, I will, I'll, remember, it's my decision.
Yeah, it is your decision. Would you like it to be an open meeting or would you like it to be a closed session?
It'll be a closed.
Okay, so the motion is made, that I, I'm making a motion, it's been supported by another trustee. I, then now it's open for discussion.
Technically, I mean, you can vote on it, but technically.
And he doesn't want it. Yeah, yeah, he doesn't want it.
So technically, you have no choice over the matter.
Right, right. We cannot discuss this because he's asking for a closed session, but we have to do a roll call, right?
You, tech, you, if, if the, you said the one employee that we have, still be clear.
Yes.
Is asking for a closed session. At this point, then we need to just go into closed session.
We need to make them.
Timeout, timeout, timeout.
I think we still need to do a roll call.
Protocol here, is the one employee that we have is asking for us to go into closed session, then we automatically go into closed session. We don't have an option.
We don't even make the roll call. I, I made the motion and you supported it.
This is new ground for.
Hold on, hold on. The motion is muted.
Is it?
Yes. The employees asking for a closed session, we go into closed session.
And I'm doing this to be cooperative, because I have no idea what this is about. I have no idea what this is about. I want to make that clear.
It might be, it might be just a couple minutes.
I know.
That's what I want to know. I want to kind of have a timeframe on what, what are your thoughts? Do you think your thoughts can be conveyed in a short period of time?
Five minutes. I just need five minutes with my colleagues.
Okay.
I think it, it will take, with logistics, it will take 10, 15 minutes.
7:35.
I would like to apologize.
7:35.
Is that what time it is now? We'll be back here by 7:45?
We're seven. I, I would not like to set a time because we may need to print some things. I would say, give us a safe 15 minutes. We'll be back.
Okay.
Thank you.